I would like to call this June 9th Council Work Session. I'm regular meeting's in order. Everybody please rise for a moment of silence and let's remember all those who passed away during the month. Please salute the flag.
I salute this flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Dill, you want to do roll call, please? Mr. President.
Here.
Yes, Colin. Vacation, Ms. Rodriguez is not here. Mr. Cousins is not here. Ms. Figueroa?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Cucciochi?
Here.
Mr. Pezzeta?
Here.
So, Mrs. Rodriguez is at our grandson's graduation at St. Mark's School. And Mr. Cousins' son is playing in some baseball championship tonight. And Mrs. Colin is on vacation. We're going to go to public participation. Anybody on this side of the room want to speak on anything? Anybody on this side of the room would like to speak on anything? That ends call participation.
No.
I know, I know he's going to talk. Jeff, do you want to explain?
I did want to announce that council was an executive session for about forty-five minutes before the meeting to discuss collective bargaining, things going on, some personnel issues and some real estate related matters. No action will be taken in the public meeting connected to those matters.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, Mr. Pezzeta's here, would like to do a presentation.
Thank you, Mr. President. I brought my wife along. She was supposed to do this, but she developed a scratchy throat, so I'm going to be doing it in her place. Karen, you can just jump in any time you want.
She's got the hook, if you're too old.
She's got the hook, right. This will be brief. I was here a couple of months ago to share information about the Lincoln Project. And at the time, it was a dream. Now it's a reality. It's going to be starting this week. I have a, an image on the screen there. And so what I want to say is that, well, first of all, just for, for those who may have missed it in the past, Abraham Lincoln stopped in Bristol Barrow on his route to his inauguration in February of eighteen sixty-one. It was the only place in Bucks County where he stopped. It was a nineteen-hundred mile journey from Illinois to Washington because he wanted to touch every northern state on his way, so he curved up into Massachusetts and the whole bit. But when he got here, they stopped at Bucks County and he gave a, gave brief remarks at the site of the railroad tracks that council about thirty years ago had the vision to preserve. So there was seventy-five feet of preserved rail track where we're told by local historians that that's the proximity of where he was. And it's been sitting there for a long time with just a PHMC marker. We decided that it would be something that was worthy of development, okay? We wanted to do it for three reasons. One, to provide another source of pride for the community, since this is part of our history. Two, to provide a visitor destination. And we're getting more and more of them all the time, and we know it contributes to the holistic development economically of the borough. And third, to give children something to be inspired by. Because this, this is going to be interactive. There are going to be use of QR codes where kids can listen to speeches and listen to music and so on. The flag, so everything that you see there, originally we were just going to have Lincoln in the platform. And we decided it wasn't enough, and we started building it and building it. And, and the project grew and so did the price, which is why I'm here tonight. So everything you see there, every piece of that project is a component that we're asking people to sponsor. And the good news is, we barely started asking, and we already have. Each one of those silhouette figures that represent the thousand people that showed up that day, they symbolically represent the thousand who showed up, each one of those figures was available for sponsorship. There are eight of them, and six of them have already been claimed, okay? The American flag on the left, and the significance of the American flag is that it had thirty-three stars when Lincoln visited, and the thirty-fourth star would be added that Fourth of July because Kansas had been admitted as a free state. The platform, the five historic heritage markers that you see there, each one of them will be telling a different story. One will tell the story of Lincoln's visit, another will tell the story of Lincoln's second visit unfortunately, as his funeral train passed slowly through Bristol with the, with the tracks lined with mourners four years later. There will also be one that tells the story of the Stars and Stripes, why we had thirty-three stars at the time, how you go about adding a star when a new state is admitted and so on. There's also going to be one of those markers that will tell the story of some of Lincoln's most significant speeches, especially his Second Inaugural Address, where he talks about malice toward none and charity for all, let's bind up our nation's wounds, which were incredible words when you consider that we had just fought a four-year civil war. And so on. So, and we're also going to have one that explains the Stars and Stripes. So, we want to invite the public to have ownership. We're going to pay for this, and it's, it's being paid for. But we want people to be able to ride by and say to their kid or their grandchild, you know, we're part of that, we donated to that, and that's part of us. You can go there and we're going to recognize all the major donors, you're going to see your name listed there in a prominent way. So since I'm asking you, I'm asking the public to consider donating, I want to mention who the Raising the Bar Board members are, so you know who you're dealing with, because sometimes you just see me and, so our board is myself, I'm the president, Luke Wade is the vice president, he was going to be here tonight, cutting it to the last minute, Craig Whitaker is our treasurer, Jim Sell is our secretary, and then there's Alisa Baxte, Alan Hermely, Andrew Loretty, Sam Scialzo, Carla Sloan, and Ron Walker. And each one of them brings a different piece to the party, a different skill and a different interest, and they're all working very hard on this. So, I'm, I'm hoping that people can contact us at info@raisingthebar1681.org for sponsorship details. We do have one major sponsorship still available, and that's a five-thousand-dollar sponsorship for the Lincoln figure himself. So if anybody out there listening, a corporate donor or whatever, might be interested in that, we'd love to entertain that. But otherwise, the donations are coming in well, but what we really like to attract, the big donations are coming in pretty well, we like to attract some small donations. We'd like to attract people who want to give a hundred bucks to what we're saying, purchase a star or sponsor a star, and again, that'll be there in perpetuity. Karen, what am I missing?
I don't have, I mean, I'm familiar with the project, I know we talked about it a lot. The only thing, I wish that you would have said something prior, I feel council maybe should buy that last spot for five thousand.
Well, we'd be happy to do that, still there.
Well, before you sell, and the mayor, before you sell, let us, give us the opportunity.
Sure, sure.
Because I think it's a great project, and I think we should contribute to it.
That'd be wonderful, that'd be wonderful. And I appreciate all the cooperation, you know, it's on borough land, and you guys have been loved that. And I think we have a good track record, our Mill Street Crossing entrance was great, and the one we did on Market Street has gotten wide acclaim, so I think this is going, and we've gotten a lot of press from this already. People are going to come to see this.
Yeah, and you haven't asked us for anything except help, you know.
Never.
Muscle help, but.
Right, right.
I think we should, we contribute to a lot of things in town, this is something we should jump in on. So, let's talk about and see where we're.
You guys kick it around, unless somebody calls from, we'll hold it for you until we.
Unless you get ten. If you can get ten for itself.
If I can get ten. There are many, there are many funding, there are many funding categories, for example, the, the station itself. Well, you'll find out, when you, when you hit the info thing, we'll be able to send you all the different funding categories and what you might want to do, okay?
All right.
I don't want to oversell this as saying we sold them all, I'm saying that it's coming in well, we're confident, but anybody out there that wants to donate, we have plenty of room on our plaque.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. Mayor, what do you have?
So I just have a couple of things. So, first and foremost, you know, I just want to thank this council, I mean, as everybody was aware, last month was the primary election, which I was defeated by the former judge, Frank Parento. You know, for me, being the mayor of Bristol Barrow was not something in my high school yearbook, it wasn't something that I always aspired to be, but it was a way for me to just give back to the community. For those of you that don't know, I have a, thankfully have a pretty successful career in real estate. I travel all over the place, down to Virginia, Maryland, Delaware, Jersey Shore, fifteen-hundred agents, twenty-seven offices, so I'm very blessed. Being the mayor in town was my way to help, and was my way to give back, and to give back to the residents and the community, because I love Bristol, I've been here for forty-nine years and I'm not going anywhere. So, the best part about being mayor was not just working with this council, but was the people I got to deal with. You know, the chief, the emergency management coordinator, all the, the residents that I got to meet when I was door knocking. You meet people that you probably never will get the chance to meet, just because of life and scheduling and everything else, and that's what's most important. So I want to say thank you to everybody that supported me. I still have six months to go, and I'm going to go out with a bang, because I have a lot of initiatives that I want to finish up, like the firehouse. So, again, I just wanted to take a quick moment to say thank you, and I appreciate all your, our initiatives, and we're going to continue with a couple of things that I'm going to mention now, that I would love your support on going forward. So. So first and foremost, as I mentioned, the firehouse, it's been something, it's been in the works for, you know, over a year now. I believe, you know, I'm just throwing out a percentage, we are like eighty percent designed from a concept standpoint, we still have to get into elevation drawings and placement and everything like that. What I would like to do, I'd like to push this thing forward a little bit through the end of the summer. I would really like to push forward with getting this design, getting it placed on a site, and then this way, by the end of the year, we can hopefully secure some grant funding and start the permit process to put a shovel in the ground early next year. So I spoke to Steve Reeves about that the other day. We have a lot of moving parts before you build a bill, but I just want to let everybody know that we are going to continue pressing forward with that. I have a couple of police initiatives that I'm not going to talk about today, because there's still work in progress, hopefully by July I have some updates on those. And then, as I mentioned to council before, I am spearheading the charge on some HR software for the borough, not just for the police department, but all of our employees, we need to bring things up to speed in terms of how we submit payroll, vacation schedules, and just keep accountability on what's going on, and get into the modern day where people can request days off and things of that nature from their phone, and people like the chief and the borough manager can oversee the people that they see, you know, just by literally going on their phone these days instead of pen and paper and Excel spreadsheets, like we're beyond that at this point. So, other than that, just thank you and look forward to the next six months.
Chief, do you have anything? AJ? Greg?
I want to, yeah, I have a few things, I'm sorry. First of all, this weekend, we started our flag football program in the borough. Brian and I coached against each other. I will not tell you all how the result of that game went. Let's just say one team scored a lot and another team scored none. But, no, but really, it's, it's a lot of fun. And it just goes to show again that there is a lot of interest in borough rec in this town. Brian and I and Lee are happy to be the council liaisons for it. The flag football program is one of the bigger programs that we do. This council is committed to spending over seven thousand dollars over the last couple of years on that program. And again, I just want to reiterate, you know, that the, that the rec board does a great job of putting things together, but we also as council support that very strongly and believe in it very strongly. And this council is, is doing everything we can do to continue to streamline that process of how rec works, and flag football's just a lot of fun. I want to kind of, I guess, piggyback off of the words of the mayor and congratulate him for a, a great run. Congratulations to Frank, you know, the, the, an election is an election. But when I look back at the legacy of what I think this mayor is going to lead for us, our current mayor, I think you just saw it, right? And that is professionalism. When, when our current borough council president took over, and when, you know, the mayor took his seat, I think one thing, whether you're supporters or not supporters, or voters or not voters, it is impossible to deny the level of professionalism that has been brought to this borough. And I think the mayor exemplifies that, our current mayor. And what I can say with full confidence is, if that loses you an election, then I'll lose my next election, because professionalism is what we need to continue to push forward in this town. We have a parochial kind of society around here, right? We are a small town, and there's many beautiful things about that, many. But sometimes it can get a little dicey as well with politics. And I think what's most important is that we stay focused on, and we're going to continue, this council's going to continue to focus on, is streamlining, professionalizing, and keeping things moving in the right direction. And there are many areas where we can continue to do that. You know, again, the mayor spoke about simple things like HR, where it's about time that we get that up to speed. You know, continuing to professionalize our rec program, continuing to invest in these different agencies throughout town, continuing with a very professional engineering firm that is helping us build these great projects and get them to the finish line, and not just get them done, but get them done right. So I believe that that's going to be the legacy of this mayor and of this council altogether. So I want to congratulate you on a job well done. Okay, and then the last thing I wanted to speak on is one of my very best friends, Don Lufuski, is having a concert on the river on Sunday, based, it's going to be at the Lions Park, and it was really spearheaded by Shirley DeMarcus-Brady. And I want to congratulate Shirley. Shirley is now the president of the Lions Club, and one of the initiatives Shirley took was to really take a look at the Sunday night concert series that they have over the summer. It's a great thing, it's something my grandfather used to love to go to, and that element of that concert series I know will continue to exist, and I know Shirley and the Lions Club want to continue to exist, to allow people to come up with their lawn chairs, sit down, senior citizens, and enjoy it. But they also wanted to inject a little local talent and, you know, some more modern music. So Don will be putting on a show at the Lions Park on June twenty-second?
Twenty-seventh.
June twenty-second. And I really would encourage everyone to go. It's something that Don's very passionate about, Shirley's very passionate about, and I was more than happy to support the two of them and help them raise some money to get it going. There are a number of sponsors that deserve credit for it as well, which I know will be recognized. I don't want to do it right now, because I'm going to miss someone, and then I will, and I'll forget. So anyway, June twenty-second, it is the same day as Sunday stroll, it's going to be down at the river, Lions Park, that should be a really fun day for the borough, and I'm very happy for my friend Don and for the Lions, that they're going to be able to pull this off, and, and I'm happy to support it. So, should be fun. Thank you.
Brian? Maria?
I just want to let everyone know that I have been making my rounds in the north ward, taking pictures, especially the areas of Race Street, Spruce Street, Pine, Corson, and Garden Street, all along the, the tracks. I have sent my pictures to Amtrak, so I am working with Amtrak, as I do every year, to get them to clean up those areas. So that is in the works. Also, I want to remind everyone that I cannot fix or help with anything that I don't know about. So if there is an issue or complaint, I am asking that you please do not post it on Facebook or any social, social media, contact me directly. You know, I can't fix anything that I don't know about. So, you know, and that's why I'm here, that is why I'm your councilwoman. So if you have any concerns or issues, just contact me directly, or Brian, or anyone, any of the council members. And that's it.
Louis?
Yes. Past Sunday was the Mahogany and Steel Car Show, Boat Show down at the Wharf in the parking lot, and it was a great event, a lot of, a lot of boats and a lot of vehicles down there, and a lot of people observing everything, a lot of, a lot of visitors into our town. It looked, looked very good for, for Bristol, and it was an enjoyable day, and hopefully we can continue to do such, such events in town. Thank you.
I have a couple of things. One, I mentioned this last month, I'm going to mention it again. So finally, there was a pamphlet sent to everybody, it says, "We're on a roll." It's from Mascara Trash Company. Everybody got one in the mail, apparently they got one, if you didn't, please call the borough. But the pamphlet tries to explain that you don't need to take this, it's up to you if you want it or you don't want it. There are so many things, and I know Maria, like Facebook, I don't even deal with it because half of them don't even know what they're talking about. But they're saying that we're using an automated arm to pick up the cans, not true. They're being emptied just like any other recycle in the back of the truck. We live in a town that you can't use automation, automated arms to pick trash up. So, if you don't want it, it tells you to call Mascara. If you do want, if you, if you don't call them, they're probably going to deliver you one. They're supposed to be delivered to Bristol sometime in the next couple of weeks. June twenty-third. June twenty-third, okay. They're going to start assembling, matter of fact, they asked me, we don't have a place for them, I volunteered, they could use my central supply location, they're going to store everything there and then take them from there and deliver them. And all, and it is free, I'm not charging them. So, if you want a can, if you don't want a can, but you've got this, a lot of people said, "Oh, I threw that out." And if you threw it out, okay, but there's pamphlets here, if you need to find out more, is it on our website?
Yes, there's the number to call if they want to cancel, or if they don't want the can.
If you don't want the, the cart, you could call eight-eight-eight-six-two-seven-two-two-seven-six. Eight-eight-eight-six-two-seven-two-two-seven-six, if you do not want a can, you can opt out. So, and if you get a can by mistake and you don't want it, they'll come and pick it up. If the can breaks, if the lid snaps off, if the wheels break, they will give you a new can. So I've been talking about this for six months, I don't think I need to clear it up anymore. So.
Mr. President, I do have one question about that. Commercial and like first and second floor, like apartment style things, how, how is that going to be handled? Is it the number of trash rolls you pay?
Trash, right. Yes. Okay, the other thing is, we need to add a couple of members to our zoning hearing board this evening. So we have somebody that resigned, we have three people, two alternates have resigned this, they had, you know, been doing it a long time, and one of our board members has resigned after numerous years. There's somebody on the board that wants to step up. Sam Scialzo is interested in the position, so council's recommending that somebody make a motion tonight to appoint him. And also, we need an alternate, and I recommend that, we're looking for somebody with some knowledge, Jim Kirk is interested in serving as an alternate, and if we could find two more alternates, if anybody's interested in town, please notify the borough that for July's meeting, that if you're interested in serving on this board, if you have some background in construction, it would be very helpful. The other thing is, Amanda, we're going to talk about the track, so you want to do that now? Okay. So everybody knows that we put a, just school needs a new track, and they didn't qualify for a track, so the borough stepped up, took the track over, therefore we were eligible for a grant, we got a grant for what, four-hundred-and-eighty?
Four-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand.
Eighty-five-thousand dollars to redo the track. After meeting with the track coach, Angelo Cucciochi, who we, uses our point people, because none of us here ever ran track or know anything about track, came back with some recommendations. So Amanda, Angelo, and McGlynn, what's his first name?
Ron.
Ron. Went and visited different schools, came up with the track, picked a contractor, so everything looks good, but they want to make a couple of changes, so therefore I'll turn it over to you.
Yeah, so we actually, we met with the contractor one more time, we walked the track again, with the school district, with Angelo and with Ron, the track coach, and there were some recommendations to see if we could make some additional modifications, so that the track is how we want it to be for the foreseeable future, and we don't have to redo this again. So options we had discussed were relocating the start and the finish line, I don't know if you've all been out to the track or seen races, but right now, the, the start and the finish line are on the far side of the track, away from Trenton Avenue. So we looked at bringing it towards Trenton Avenue on that side of the track, this way spectators would be able to see their kids, or, or their peers, you know, from up closer to the road, up near the path. So that's an option. And then also relocating the long and triple jump events, that is, again, on the far side of the track, it's actually behind the bleachers right now, so you'd have to get off the bleachers and walk around to see someone participating in that event. Many schools now, if you've been to any football games or track events, they're located within the actual infield, behind the end zone of the football space, and are sort of, I guess, perpendicular to the long stretches of the track. So, we've gotten a price to relocate that as well. There were some option, other options that were discussed, but I think those are the, the two that are the highest priority at this point.
So since we've been sitting, I've been sitting here for twenty-four years, we never did a project in town unless we did it right. So my recommendation is to write up something, get a proposal together, let's get it to the school board, let's find out the cost, and see how we're going to get this resolved. But if we're not going to do it the right way, then I think council's made a decision, we're not going to do it at all. So we want to do it right, it's for the kids, it's going to be here for the next twenty-five, thirty years. So again, let's do it the right way, or let's give the grant money back.
Yeah.
All right, so soon as you can get a letter together, that we could see it, because none of us tonight had a chance to review anything, and I know you don't have, you're not prepared either, so hate to put you on the spot, but we need to move this forward.
Yeah, no problem.
Busted baby's coming, so.
No, we only have about seven more weeks, so we'll get it all squared away before that. But I'll send you a summary for your review and then for ultimately the school district.
Amanda, will the infield still be used for field hockey?
It's, I, yeah, it's my understanding, I think it's still.
And the high jump won't affect that?
It won't, actually. Again, there's space for any multi-use field within the infield of the track, and then behind the end zones of where football would be, you can fit that high jump and the, and the long and triple jump events.
Some people have, in the past, have taken chairs in to watch the hockey games, and they're putting these chairs out on the track. Is this going to be prohibited now?
Yeah, that would certainly be prohibited. Heard they've set up tents and things like that as well on the track, so, you know, none of that would be allowed going forward.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. The other thing is, just for the record, I mentioned this for a couple of months, too, maybe eventually somebody's, they'll finally sink in. The train station, we finally took ownership of the train station. The tenant that is in the train station, we're, could've stayed there as long as they wanted to stay there, because we don't need the station. They have elected on their own to leave and open up in Harriman, I don't know if it's a, Greg, we're trying.
So I, I saw the same thing you saw or heard, that someone said that we forced them out, that is entirely untrue. And I don't know the leadership structure over there, I do know a person who was involved in the group. She had asked me for some advice and some help, and I gladly gave it to her on moving to the old Harriman Methodist location. I know they had a zoning hearing board, and then they had, they had it put on delay based on some parking issues, that much I know, that's the status of it as I know it now. Uh, and the only conversation I have with anyone about this, it was a very positive one, about it moving to my board. Uh, I don't know the status of it at this point in time, but I do know that to say that we pushed them out is entirely false.
Can I just make a statement or just ask? I think that since they're moving out and we have this facility that we don't have anybody lined up for and from a tenant standpoint, I think this would be a great opportunity for us to approach Amtrak about maybe putting Amtrak police and see if they want to work something out from a lease standpoint or to utilize this building. It'll give them great access, obviously, to the rail line. It'll give them presence, not just in Bristol Borough, but lower Bucks County. So I think while we have this opportunity, we should reach out to our friends at Amtrak and see if this is something they'd be interested in because I know they're looking for more space and more presence along, along the rail spur. So if we can make that happen, I think it's a great possibility for us.
That's a win-win if we can get them there.
Yeah.
Well, maybe you could run with that and see if you can...
I'll reach out to them.
Somebody contacts you. All right, lastly, I want to mention that it's a sad day when people in town, or the jealousy kills people. And it's getting to a point where it's now affecting not only council, it's affecting other organizations in town. So somebody called the PA fishing game. We get people calling about us all the time. But they called the PA fishing game and said about the tall ship that comes in for Bristol Day and for other events. So by them calling the PA fishing game, they, now we are going back and forth with our solicitors and state reps and state senator and congressman to try to get this resolved. And we try to keep it as quiet as possible, but basically we lost the battle. So there will be no more tall ships for Bristol Day or any other event in town. If we do allow them to come, because it's a commercial vessel, they're going to want us to pay back the 1.3 billion that they gave us for the docks. So for moving forward, all these organizations that, and the people that really enjoyed this in town, you have now screwed everybody in plain words. So there are no more tall ships or any kind of commercial vessel that can use the docks. Matter of fact, they don't even want the Coast Guard to dock up there anymore. So they're saying that that's a commercial ship also. So I think our solicitor is making an argument that, you want to repeat what you're, what you think, Jeff?
The Delaware River is a federal waterway and the Coast Guard has the obligation to maintain and protect poters on the, on the Delaware. They can't be presumed for docking at the boroughs of Worth.
But they're telling us that they can, so we're fighting that part of it, but they want us to post signage. There's a whole process now that we have to implement with signage and size of boats. They got to be 26 feet or, or larger. Am I right, Kirk? You guys been involved in this for the last three months, so it's a shame. It really is.
Well, it's also, I think you should reference the fact that, you know, people think that the borough is preventing people in jet skis from pulling up and things of that nature. But that's also very restricted by, it's not the borough always causing issues that people think is happening. It's just that there's certain rules and regs you have to follow based off of some of these grants that we receive for the work. But the tall ships is, it's a travesty.
It is. It's a shame because people look for, especially Bristol Day. A lot of people look forward to, and there were other events in town that they took people on rides. And, you know, you went down there, I think the theater had something one day. They had dinner on the river. So all that's done. There will be no more events. Uh, and like I said, Congressman Fitzpatrick, State Senators Sanisaro, Tina Davis, everybody was involved in this. And we kept it quiet because we're hoping to win this case, but we're not winning it. So whoever turned this in, I hope you can live with yourself. But they weren't Ralph's docks. They were Bristol Borough's docks. So, you know, you come after me, you just, it's a shame, but that's what we're dealing with. All right, so moving forward, do we have anything else? Anybody in the audience want to speak on anything? So that ends public participation when you get into our regular meetings. So I need a motion on number two.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to accept the council meeting minutes for May 12, 2025, accept the treasurer's report for April 2025, fire chief's report for May of 2025, inspection report for May of 2025, police report for May of 2025, public works report for April of 2025, hard report for May 19th, 2025, and the Gilmore report dated June 20th, 2025, or excuse me, June 2025 for May 2025 work.
Five seconds. That's, this is bigger relevant. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose, number three.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution declaring that certain property located at 1230 Pine Grove Street, TMP number 04-022-052, as blighted and directing the redevelopment authority of the county of Bucks to acquire that certain property by eminent domain in accordance with the urban redevelopment law.
Second by Mr. Catroci. Questions or comments?
I just want to thank, uh, everyone involved in this, uh, ongoing, uh, issue. That, you know, this house has been quite an issue for the last, for almost as long as I've been in office for, you know, over 10 years. And, um, it's been a long, long grind to, to get this to the place where we can finally be able to. And I know the neighbors are very, very happy about, about it. So thank you for all involved. Thank you to Mr. Gill and really kind of pushing that issue along as well.
I'd like to also thank Jeff Dorwalk and Sally Falespica for working so hard on this project. And, uh, and Jeff really has made it, he set the format. And we're going to be able to go after other properties like this in town that have been neglected and have been a problem for us for, for years. So again, thanks to the redevelopment authority on that.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose, number four.
Mr. President, I'd like to make the motion to approve the letter dated May 30th, 2025 from Theodore Koven Jr., professional engineer, president of the Springtown Consulting LLC, requesting a 91-day extension of time to September 10th, 2025 on the waiver of land development for Lumbermans Associate, Inc., which is due to expire on June 11th, 2025.
Five seconds. Second by Mr. Pass. Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose, number five.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion for the approval of total and used purchase of $203,511 for decorative lighting that will be reimbursed by the DCED Main Street Matters Grant per the attached quote, $2,463 per fixture.
Second by Mrs. Figaro. Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose, number six.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules and add something to the agenda.
All in favor? Aye, pose. Okay, Greg.
Uh, I would like to add to the agenda that we appoint, um, Sam Scalzo to become a, uh, former permanent member of the zoning board.
Second by Mr. Catroci. Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to, to appoint James Kirk as a alternate member to the zoning board.
Second by Mrs. Figaro. Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. So before we adjourn, I just want to say one more thing, not to keep going back to these ships and boats. There are, Jim was just letting me know that this new signage is up. So you see the signs that are up there? That was part of our agreement, Amanda, to post these signs ASAP? Do you want to talk about any? Why don't you go to the podium? I hate to bother you.
I still need my extra battery.
Yeah.
Um, no, so, um, as part of the agreement, as you mentioned, with the grant that we had received for the construction of both docks, um, there was a requirement that we accommodate vessels that are over 26 feet in length. So there are now signs up that say that those docks are restricted to boats that are over 26 feet in length. Um, that would, again, prohibit jet skis as well, so anything under 26 feet. Um, the premise there is the source of the grant funding that, um, it is, um, you know, they, they get their financial backing from, uh, on-the-water fuel sales. And, um, 26-foot vessels are often the ones that are non-trailable, trailerable, often the ones who are using the fuel that is out of, you know, the, the land that are, that's on the water. So that's the premise behind it, um, and that is why the signs are up there.
So let me ask you a question because they want us to police it on a regular basis. I don't know how we're even going to do this. I mean, our police can't do it. So this is, to me, whoever's behind this whole thing created a nightmare for us. So there are signs up. I think that's the best we can do. Uh, if there's a boat that's 20 foot long or whatever and they're saying it can't be there, and somebody's going to have to do something because our police, you know, what's the plan, Jeff? I mean, I don't know.
The plan would be to do the best you can. That's all we should say about it. Do the best we can.
Okay. That's it. All right, that's it. Our attorney had the last word. Who do you got, Louis?
Make a motion to adjourn?
I think Phil wanted to say.
Uh, I didn't know whether you wanted to amend the agenda to what you mentioned about sponsorship. I hear the project will probably be over by the end of the month. I don't think you can decide on that.
Okay. We'll, we'll talk to you after the meeting. Now, you want to check tonight? You're tough. We don't have good credit. We got a motion from Louis to adjourn. Second by Maria. All in favor?
Aye.